Okay, I've got seven o'clock.
Okay.
So, welcome to the Long Beach Town Council Meeting of August the 10th. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, or at least let's recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Town Council Minutes of July 13th meeting. That's the meeting where we award the paving grant.
I'll move, Coker.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Nick.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And Bob, just a point, I'm not sure Deanna's live, she might just be listening to it. So if we can, when we say that, like, just like John and Nick said, it's good so she can write the names down.
Right, so like, say who we are when you approve, yeah.
Right.
Entertain a motion to approve the Town Council's special meeting minutes of July 20th of 2020.
I make that motion, Mary Lou.
Do I hear a second?
Second. John Wall, favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think that was unanimous. And finally, to approve the Town Council's special meeting minutes of August the 6th. That was regarding the bids on, the opening of bids at Stop 24.
This is Nick, I'll make the motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
This is Coker, I'll second it, but I, I don't know if Deanna made it, made a note in it, but I came to that meeting late, so I was there, but I wasn't there at the beginning.
Okay.
But I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that was unanimous also. Okay, as far as opening remarks, just a couple things I want to mention. One is we have a coastal protection ordinance that does not allow people to build stairs down onto the public trust property without a permit. I was down there yesterday, I see at least five new stairs going down onto the public trust property. I'm assuming the building commission is going to be giving out fines for that, citations, and frankly, those will be, the fines will accumulate daily, so I would certainly hope that the people who built those without permits would remove those. Secondly, the issue with the trash receptacles at the stops, yesterday I also stopped down at Stop 20. Once again, the garbage receptacles were filled to overflowing despite the fact that signs were there telling people not to. I think that people are making my point. Enough said. Chief, Police Department report?
For the month of July, there's 279 dispatch calls, zero walk-ins. We drove 4,430 miles, worked 844 hours, 32 hours of overtime, all that was for extra patrol on the fourth weekend, reserves worked 68 hours. There's 44 traffic stops, nine citations, six verbal warnings checked out, six written warnings, 31 verbal warnings, six parking citations, 14 suspicious subjects were checked, 12 suspicious vehicles, 13 courtesy services, 33 ordinance violations were checked, four ordinance citations. The four ordinance citations, I haven't looked for sure, but I think they're all for mopeds or scooters down on the bus stops. There were 18 alarms were checked for the month, and the report side, there was only one theft report, that was, their son had some friends over and they took some jewelry out of the house. Two arrests for operating while intoxicated, two arrests for ABC violations, an arrest for never licensed, and an arrest for driving while suspended. That's it.
Chief, have we had any activity regarding the 30-day rentals?
Still work in progress.
Okay.
Bob, what does that mean?
We've had a number of people violating the 30-day minimum rental ordinance, and basically we want it to stop.
Well, I did have one of the residents call me and told me about it, and so do we go out and issue a warning, or?
I think we forward that to the chief.
I did.
Is that right? Forward that to you?
I did.
And then, yeah, and then hopefully we, we can get somewhere with that.
And then our attorney follows up, then?
That's the idea. Yeah, I think he's working with the chief.
These people are, they repeat it every year.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the fines are hefty, so I think, and maybe we need to look at if they're hefty enough, but we need to get that behavior changed, that's my view. And then, Chief, like I mentioned, the garbage at Stop 20, and that seems to be the worst stop. I went down there on Sunday night and actually got a lady to take her garbage home instead of putting it in the overflowing receptacle. I wonder if maybe if one of the police on a Sunday night could go down and sit down there and just kind of keep an eye on that? That seems to be, you know, when the garbage receptacle is full, and I think if they could sit down there maybe for a couple hours Sunday evening, that might help save the town some money in terms of us having to hire the garbage service to make extra stuff.
What time did you see this person?
It was probably about five o'clock. I think, you know, that's when it's kind of settling down and people are heading back to Chicago.
Okay.
So, yeah, of course, we have people-
Do you all have Stop captains, Bob, or no?
We do, but, you know, their, their role is more advisory than trying to enforce-
Okay, because I was down there, I went by there probably about 10 or 11 o'clock Sunday morning, and I thought, oh my gosh, the signs are working, nothing was laying out, but it was early.
Yeah, yeah, it tends to be a Sunday evening phenomenon, I think, that's when the garbage can fills up. Police Commission report, Nick?
This is a report from August 5th. We, just for the good of the group and the broader town at large, Chief Solkowski has officially announced his planned retirements, beginning at the start of next year, and so Police Commission, in coordination with HR Committee, is working to get the job description finalized and cleaned up, and at which point then will begin the interview process. Would have liked to, I think, start that maybe by the end of August, but it's, it's looking more like the beginning of September timeframe. Again, for the good of the council and the public at large, the Police Commission would intend to conduct the interview process, make its selection, and then bring that back to the Town Council for formal recommendation. So that is moving along. I could probably save two, two items on, under new business, I thought we might have to, to, to address those, but that can probably address them here on the update, we don't need to cover them in the new business. But regarding more road and, and traffic speed signs, again, we had some, a lot of discussion around what measures we might take, particularly not just more road, but other, other portions of the town, but certainly more roads was the focus, and what the Police Commission would like to proceed with is purchasing a, it's a solar-powered, and this is at the recommendation of, of the chief and the commission, a solar-powered speed sign that is movable, we can move it throughout other portions of the town, it collects data so that way if, you know, there are areas, periods of time when there's a lot of speeding that occurs, then that can allow the officers to then patrol during that specific time where we're seeing sort of an increase or a spike. And then from there, you know, if we continue to see poor behavior, then we can address that in, in other ways and explore what those options are. But the chief indicated that there's a portion of funds that was allocated for, for other items that he's not intending to spend here in 2020. The cost of the unit is about, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, it's somewhere $83, $8500 range, so I think of, of something he had intended to, up to $10,000, could spend it from, directly from that Police Commission budget, so we wouldn't need to seek additional funds from the town. And again, as I mentioned, that, that device can be moved throughout other portions of the town as, as we need to. So I don't, I don't think that that needs council approval for, for an expenditure like that. But correct me if I'm wrong, Chris there? Okay, he's taken a set now. And then the other item we're going to bring up in new business, but it's probably not ready for lengthy discussion here this evening, regarding a golf, a proposed golf cart ordinance. Had some discussion at the Police Commission, have, actually have a draft. We, at our last meeting, we had made a couple revisions to that. I think we would have liked to give that, gotten that in front of the council with at least enough time to review it, to have some thought, to, to speak to it, but we'd like to bring that to the next, next council meeting here in September, so that we have some time to review it and, and we can discuss it more fully before we determine if that's something we want to introduce to the public. But for just the Cliff Note version, essentially it'd be an ordinance that would allow carts, you'd have to be a licensed driver, carrying insurance, you know, follow the same rules of the road, including, you know, parking, would not be allowed to park at, at stops because it is a motorized vehicle. Trying to think of some of the other highlights, you, there would be-
You'd have to have lights and license, too.
If it's operating at night, it would need those items, but if it's during the day, it wouldn't need, it wouldn't need to have the street legal features that you would at evenings.
Okay.
But there would be a ta, a vehicle tag system, because that's part of the problem today is, you know, it's hard to know who's going to and from the club without, you know, some, some other identification, and, you know, if they leave carts somewhere, it's hard, it's hard to enforce things, so this would improve enforceability as well. So again, we can, we can talk more at the next council meeting, but, you know, and maybe ask the public, we've gotten some feedback from the public, which is perfectly fine, but maybe ask the whole, some of that until we can get a draft out there for folks to look at and comment on that piece. So, more to come on, on that item, and that's, I think that completes my report.
I'm sorry, Volunteer Fire Department report, John Wall?
This would be for the month of July, we had six fire calls and four medical calls. They kind of run the gamut from false alarms to some significant medical calls. Our response times on the fire calls is a little over five minutes, 5.2, and our response time on the medical calls is about 4.5. Total hours to date for the year is 1,358 for the Volunteer Fire Department in total, and that's about the sum total of the statistics. We have been in contact with another potential vendor for the, this is kind of bleeding into the Fire Commission, I guess, it's, we have talked to another potential vendor for a design build quote or estimate for the fire station addition that we hope to continue to pursue. As we've said before, we have to, the next truck that we need to buy to replace the one that's actually way out of date now will be too big to fit in the current station, so we, we still want to push that initiative forward, recognizing some of the other costs that the town has to deal with right now with shore protection and all. We aren't pressing real hard, but we are continuing the process in the background. That's the end of the Fire Commission report.
I'm sorry, that was the Fire Commission?
Yeah, Fire Department, I guess, and the Commission.
Okay, both done. All right, Streets Department report, do we have Tom Dolph out there?
I can do the Street-
Tom, yeah, Tom said text, in a text, that he is out cleaning up trees now that had fallen in Long Beach.
Yeah, we had four trees go down, one of them knocked some wires down, so we were all busy for a couple hours there after the storm, so I'm sure Tom's out still straightening things up. I can do the Street Commission report if you'd like, Bob.
Yep, that'd be great.
We had our meeting on July 22nd, attendees were Dan Tanis, Don Ranky, Tom Dolph, and John Wall. We talked a little bit about the community grant project, which has been awarded, I think you may even have that farther down on your agenda. We're trying to set up, we actually have a pre-construction meeting set up, I believe it's the 12th coming up, so we're going to get together with the contractor and try to plan out the scope, or the logistics and the schedule for the work. We're going to place the list of streets on the website and try to keep the town people informed of exactly what's going on. There's actually a required notice that the contractor has to provide to the people in town, and there will be placards on the streets the night before we do any work, but there should be plenty of notice, if people want to keep track of that. Again, there'd be a map with the list of streets and all on the website before the work proceeds, as well as newspaper announcements and the like. Nick spoke about the traffic calming, which we talked about with the Police Commission, so I won't get any further into that. Haas is working on the stop drainage, the Stop 17 drainage project that's near Mr. Rizzi's house. We actually met with them again Friday, John, rather, Tom Dolph and I met with them on Friday to give them some additional input and prioritize some final plans. We may wind up having to do some drainage, or some cores into the soil to determine where the underlying water, water table is, but that's a discussion for a different day. We also have some other drainage issues, there's one at Stop 30 that we met the owner on site for. We had one homeowner up at Stop 30 who had some large rocks placed in the right of way, those that were removed by the Street Department. That's kind of an ongoing saga, we just want to caution people in the town that you can't put things on the right of way, they're going to, they're going to go do, that are going to make it unsafe situation. These were very jagged and large, they could have caused problems for children on bicycles and that sort of thing. There was a little discussion of some deer crossing signs in answer to Mary Lou's request. Tom was going to canvass those, see if they're still up, we thought there should, there were some in prior years that may have been removed, so we're probably going to wind up putting deer crossing signs at Moore Road entrance and Chassleton. Talk about-
Yeah. Just as a reminder for people that don't live here year-round.
And then the salt buy, we, we discussed the salt purchase, there's a, a long-term need to build a storage facility, the idea is not coming down on our town hard, but many municipalities have built storage facilities for salt so that you don't have degradation of the material, number one, and also runoff from the liquid and from rain and that sort of thing. Another item that we want to talk about is hydro excavation trailer, that's, that's again, an item for a future discussion for capital expenditure. One thing I did want to bring up, and it's, it's almost new business, so it may not be the right time, but I think at some point we're going to have, these drainage issues just continue to haunt us. We've always done kind of a whack-a-mole strategy, Tom's done a great job with his limited funds, going around and making corrections to some of these things, we've had some engineered solutions, but I think the long-term, the key to the long-term would be to institute some kind of a nominal stormwater fee that would more than likely be collected on the water bill or some other method, so that we could accumulate a little bit of money so that when we have these issues, you know, we're not reactionary quite as much as we've been in the past, it'd be nice to be able to plan for doing these things on a regular basis, because, you know, they're, they're big problems when they're right outside your door, and we recognize those issues, but we're limited somewhat in the funding, so I think that's something the town needs to think about for the future. The last thing was the leaf pickup issues, this isn't really germane until the fall, but the public needs to be aware that whenever they place sticks and rocks and other things in the piles underneath those leaves, it damages the equipment, and not only does it stop the, the leaf pickup that day, but it also involves quite a bit of repair costs, so we'll get those cost numbers before fall and do a little PR campaign to try to encourage people not to, to put sticks in the piles. That's all I have.
Any questions for John? Park Board, John Coker?
Yes, Park Board met, and the report is the bottom of the steps of the stairs at Stop 30 washed away again, and so metal fabrication of a new stair system at Stop 30 is to begin this week, and this is going to be followed by work on Stop 26. Board knows closing access to these stops, which take about a week at a time, is not ideal, but we, the board has to work with the contractor's schedule and ensure that these stairs are in place before serious winter, weather occurs. The bottom steps of the stairs at Stop 20 have been repaired. Picnic shelter at the town center has been cleaned and repainted over, head lighting was installed that works on a 30-minute timer. Ads in the beach are starting to run, as we've all seen, which outlines the procedure for removing the garbage toders in the fall. Stop 20 continues to be a problem, we've already heard about that tonight, but people are still ignoring the please don't overflow the bins signs, and are still piling personal trash from top and around the bins. Public waste continues to go above and beyond, remove the strewn about trash, and they shouldn't have to be tasked to do that, that's not their job really. Residents and visitors, et cetera, are dumping trash not only at the stops, but in the town dumpsters as well, at the maintenance center and the community center. The gates to the maintenance center should be closed after Street Department leaves on Friday. This was the procedure, but is not being followed, or gates are opened up again by the police over the weekend. Dumpster outside of the community center should have a lock installed on it. The board would like to know what the status of police visit with homeowners claiming beach rights at 2968 Lake Shore Drive. Was this residence spoken to? Board wants to thank Tom Dolph and the Street Department crew for weeding and cleaning up the planters in various, in the various town areas. That completes the Park Board's report.
John, I have a question. I walk every day at the old school outside, and for months, that dumpster has been totally empty. And so then one day, don't ask me why, somebody just dumped a bag of garbage like they do at Stop 20, I'm like, what? So I went over, opened the thing and threw it in. It's not full, why wouldn't we want people to use it?
I don't know, this, I'm just reading the report.
Okay, but I mean, I, I'm there every day, no one has abused, not that I know of, and it's, there's nothing, the time that I saw garbage outside, I opened up the lid and I threw the stuff in.
What is that for, is that big news for the community center, or what is it?
Well, I don't think so, because nobody's in the community center, so, you know, like if you were going in by-
Amy's.
It's the backside of the pool, you know? But it isn't normally, like in the winter, I mean, during the COVID, there was nothing in there.
No.
Well, I think the businesses that are in the community center in general, when we're not on this COVID, in this COVID situation, do use that.
They do, I agree.
I guess the fact that you had to take, pick up that piece of garbage and throw it in there kind of suggests to me that whoever did it sort of was abusing it, I mean, if they were going to use it, that's one thing, but to leave it outside, that's, that's kind of poor form.
I just, I thought it was rude, and I'm like, I'm not going to leave this out here, and it was a white garbage bag, and I just picked it up and threw it in, so.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, that's my concern, is that it kind of seems like every time we try to accommodate people, we get abused, and I-
Well, the only-
I'm concerned about that happening at the community center also.
Right, I don't want the community center being, taken advantage of, but I also think that if we lock it, if somebody, if it's not, in other words, we, I'm sure Bill and Deanna pay the bill every month or week when the guy backs up and empties the garbage, but it's not full, seriously.
I don't think that, Bill, is that one emptied every week? I don't believe it is, is it?
No, we, we changed the schedule, I'll have to check to see what it is, but I think it was, at one point in time, it was monthly, and, and it was every other month, and it was provided for the, for the, for the tenants, because we had a complaint that they didn't have enough garbage space, and so, but as we have a much limited attendance at the community center, yeah, we probably could save ourselves, I think it's about $135 every time they come and take it, so we might see whether it's, and we could, we could lengthen the time between pickups, but I kind of agree with, with Mary Lou, that shutting the thing down is, because there are people like the, you know, with the bridge group, when they, like they used to take their cups and everything and put them in, and providing a key for everybody would be, you know, I think if people would lift the lid and put it in.
And it's, and Bob, it's not like, it's not like the lids are flipped open, because I would have flipped them back down.
Sure.
But it's not, and I want to tell you, I, unless somebody starts really dumping stuff in there, I would tell you if I thought it was being abused, it's not full.
Why don't we do this, why don't we let the Community Center Committee get back to us on what they think we ought to do? Does that sound reasonable to everybody? Rather than us make a decision without the full knowledge of how much it's being used and how much it's used, hopefully once this COVID thing, hopefully someday ends.
Besides, well, the other thing is, you know, there's a garbage can, like at the, like if you were walking in the Y, it's in that enclosure, so I don't know who pulls it out, but Monday I thought, well, so I pulled, it was pretty heavy, I pulled it out because I thought they can't get out of their trucks, and I'm hoping somebody, they must have, somebody must have put the garbage can back in, because when I walked today, the garbage can was back in the enclosure, but it was full. But I think it's people that walk their dogs, it's that kind of waste, it wasn't, I looked, there were some weeds in there, but there wasn't, it wasn't like people were dumping their trash in there.
Yeah. Well, let's, let's let the Community Center Committee get back to us on that, why don't we put that on the agenda for next month, and then, John, why don't we send that back to Community Center and they can give us what their recommendation is? Does that sound okay?
Sounds okay, they haven't, didn't have a meeting last month, so I have no report for them, but-
Okay, okay. All right, Water Board, Mary Lou?
Okay, we met virtually on July 27th, and so Greg and Austin, who are the two guys that work on the water department, one's the superintendent and the other's like the assistant, they've been busy with locates, and last month, if anybody noticed, the, the water tank on Tank Hill was overflowing, and what happened was, we had a problem with, it's a bad processor, that water tank corresponds with the one on Moore Road, so that's been fixed. We did a water needed, water needed, well, this is our water meter audit, determined six properties, all with meters inside the homes, have had zero readings consistently, and so we're sending out letters, and then that way they'll go in and take care of them, they're probably bad meters. We do have a new service truck, it arrived, the safety lights still need to be installed, and we've had some delays because of COVID. Greg and Austin repaired the fire hydrant at the corner of Bell Plain and Oriole, it had been difficult to open and close when they did annual hydrant service last spring. They replaced the L rings and gaskets, and they've been busy painting them, if you've noticed that. Other than that, our next meeting is August 24th via Zoom at nine o'clock.
Good, well, don't throw, throw out those bad meters, I'd like one of them.
A water meter?
Yeah, the ones that give the zero readings.
Oh, oh, well, I'll get you one.
Okay, Human Resources, Bill?
Budget and Finance, Bill?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, yep, I skipped ahead.
Budget and Finance, where as you see in the, the information distributed, we're still about 1.95 million in, but we've got a significant amount of expenses coming up. We'll probably need about $300,000 for the, for the paving project that, that is upcoming. The, we can talk about that as, as we get into unfinished business, but, but the purchase order from Indot has been submitted, so we will be getting a check for somewhat just under $800,000 for the paving. We're going to be talking later on about the expense or, or whether there's going to be an expense for, for Stop 24, and we are having a Budget and Finance Committee meeting on this Wednesday at 8:30. One of the other expenses that is, that is there is the remediation of Stop 21 and Stop 23, and because of the, the lake, we are over budget for our building department expenses, too. So we're probably going to be about $25,000 to $35,000 above what we had budgeted for, and so we're not running out of money, but it just, it's a little tug that we've got on, on our expenses that we're going to have to do. One of the things that we probably are going to want to talk about, not tonight, but maybe some of these projects, like even Stop 24, we may want to extend with some, you know, at least research, some kind of financing arrangement. at least research, some kind of financing arrangement like we did with the $50,000 roof for, for, for the community center. So, but that's something we can talk about later. Overall, we're, we're in good shape. Human Resources, we're going to have a meeting on, at 3:30 on this Wednesday and.
3:30, Bill.
Various details on, on salaries and so we're going to have, we'll make a recommendation at the, at the September meeting to, on, on some of the things that we may have to do in terms of, in terms of some employees that may need to have serious consideration to, to raise this. But I know we've got the, the salary ordinance on the agenda later on too, so, so we'll stay tuned and we'll, we'll have that meeting at 3:30. Everybody's invited.
Next is the building commission. We had two special meetings, one on 7/22 where we considered a project at 2948 Lake Shore Drive. That was a emergency repair where backyard was falling in behind a seawall. We actually made a decision to deny that pending the homeowner giving us a delineation of natural order, had watermark and a letter from the coastal engineer certifying the necessity. We, and then had another meeting on 7/28 regarding the same property. Their, at their initial plan, they wanted to put a revetment along their side yard that actually extended into the neighbor's property and that portion was denied initially. The second meeting, they decided against that revetment and that project is, was approved pending again the two contingencies that we stated at the first meeting. And so that was the building commission. The Board of Zoning Appeals, gotta let somebody in the meeting. Board of Zoning Appeals met on 7/14. The preliminary hearing regarding Tom King, I think it was just reinforced that that was sent to the special BZA. I think that decision was actually made at the previous meeting. And then as far as public hearings, Kevin and Jocelyn Cruz, 2027 Oriole Trail, two variances were granted. Scott and Brandy Up at 2116 Lake Shore Drive, two variances were granted. Michael McGee at 2120 Lake Shore Drive, two variances were granted. And then Pat and Rebecca McCusker at 2208 Chassleton Drive, one variance was granted for the non-conforming building and structure was granted. However, the variance that was requested for permitted accessory use in structure was And so one in favor, one against there as far as their granting of their variances. Advisory Plant Commission, I don't believe we had a meeting, did we, Nick?
No meeting, uh, next meeting is planned for next Monday, August 17th at seven o'clock.
Yep. Bill, the building permit and revenue report. Do we have that?
Uh, we had, the report for July of 2020, we had 30 permits totaling $771,617 and Revenue to the town for building permits was $8,705.53. We had four electrical permits issued in July. Total value of the permits was $924 and revenue to the town of $92.40. We had two, two street cut permits in, in June with, with, with revenue of $200. The July legal expenses totaled $10,367.48, $430 to Austin Kiper Gecytus and $9,937.48 to Brazee Nelson and James. I'd entertain a motion to approve the reports and the, and the claims.
I make a motion. Mary Lou.
This is Nick.
You have a second. Okay, Nick, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I neglected the special pieces.
Quick, quick question, Coker here.
Yep.
I've had an inquiry here, well, I've been sitting here on, the park board had a question on the status at 2968 Lake Shore Drive on the homeowner claiming beach rights. Has the chief looked into that or what, what did you find out, chief?
I was told it was the first house east of Stop 30. Now you're telling me 2968.
That's the number I've got, 2968.
That's the one that was given to me.
Okay.
Because I sent her a letter and she sent one back and said she don't have any beach. So it can't be her and she hadn't talked to anybody.
All right. So chief, you're going to send another letter to the right address now, right?
I'll look and see about the problem first.
Great. Okay. Thanks. When I was doing the BZA reports, I neglected that we did have a special BZA meeting on August the 6th. It was a preliminary hearing regarding issues of Stop 29. They've also been asked to look into the issues between Stops 22 and 23. Basically, it was a preliminary meeting, no decisions were made and they're going to have a, another meeting at 9:00 AM on September the 1st. And those, that meeting's already been scheduled and noted. Okay. Under unfinished business, we got the Lake Shore Drive sewer update. I'm aware of the fact that there's a public hearing that's been scheduled for September the 9th at 5:30.
So there's not one in August? Like?
No, the, no, they weren't able to get it done in August. There's, there's some rather strict noticing requirements and then we had to accommodate people's schedules, so.
Okay.
We're now looking at September the 9th at 5:30.
It's a virtual then?
Uh, yes, actually, that'll be run by Michigan City Sanitary, so I won't have to run that one. Anybody have any other comments about that from the town council?
Well, we'll back, put that on the website for us on how, how people, because I get a lot of comments from our residents. Will she put something on there on how to?
Yeah, I think it's already there.
Yeah.
Well, you know what? I'll check on that. I, I believe I sent it to her today for her to post.
Okay.
There'll also be a notice in the news dispatch also.
Should be, yeah.
John, how many people do you know take that paper?
Don't know.
I'm kidding. The Beecher would be good too. Everybody reads that.
Yeah. We'll make sure, we'll make sure that there's. Yeah, we'll make sure that there's an email, that there's an email that goes out to residents too. So there'll be ample notice.
All right.
Yeah, this is one maybe we want to be special, especially careful and make sure everybody notified, is notified. Any other comments from the council? Stop 24 bids, we received those bids.
We have that agreement? Do we have to vote on the agreement with the sanitary district or not?
Uh, I believe we already agreed to it and signed it, correct? I think I, I stopped over at the town center.
Okay, you already signed it, okay.
The agreement?
Chris?
The resolution. The agreement that's before you is the, the potential user agreement between the district and, and the town. So no, Mr. Coker is right in that.
Okay.
What you signed before was the resolution that, and then we restated, we did the restated one. So that, that was asking sanitary district to incorporate the town, but this, this agreement that's there is what we've been negotiating with the terms with the sanitary district.
So we need to sign that, agree to sign that tonight?
Uh, no. I think you need to agree to consider it before the full council.
Okay, so I have, I know I've read it and I thought I signed it, but obviously not.
Well, you may have signed it because it only has, it, or thought that you should, right? It's not final because that agreement has not been passed upon by the entire council. The form of agreement just has signatures from the respective bodies, officer, president or chairperson as the board of commissioners as per sanitary district. So that agreement before you has not been passed by the council. It's been sent. I've sent the draft to everybody. I believe that draft was posted or should have been, but regardless, that agreement is what's up for consideration and needs to be approved by the council at this meeting or another before you would sign it officially.
And also has to be approved by sanitary district also.
That's right.
Then does this need to be signed? This is Nick. Does this need to be signed before the public hearing?
Yes. You guys need to have an agreement before the public hearing if you're going to move forward to that stage.
And then, and then after the public hearing, what, what's the, what's the procedure after that?
Well, a, after that, you're, you're going to be to the funding stage and the final steps to be considered, you know, downstate. All the, all of the information has been submitted for the consideration and now it's going through to have the town council and sanitary district consider the agreement and have the public hearing to, to address and present the engineering plans. And, you know, from there, you're, you're closer to the end and/or I guess beginning, depending on how you want to look at it.
So if we don't sign it tonight, we'd need to have a special meeting to do that before the public hearing. Correct, Chris?
Yes, you're not going to be able, the sanitary district is not going to hold a public hearing and move forward unless there is an agreement subject to financing be approved and all of those things. Yes, that, that agreement is necessary.
All right. So everybody on the council has read that agreement, correct?
Numerous times.
So I'll entertain a motion for us to sign that agreement?
I'll move that we sign the agreement and send it on to the Michigan City Sanitary District for their consideration.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it. John Wall.
Only one change in there potentially is that I, I was made aware by Haas that the info provided to us, there's a typo in Mr. Mitchell, who is the chairperson of the sanitary district. So there would just be a correction on that, on that signature page.
Chris, this is John again. My understanding is that this agreement, we, we need to have an agreement of, of meeting of minds, so to speak, with this agreement, but after the public hearing, if there were any changes to it, another agreement could be signed at that point.
I, I think that that's probably true, but I think that once you have an agreement between the two parties, you're, then you're going to have to amend some terms, yes. This user agreement is, the, the crux of the agreement for the project moving forward in that, you know, paraphrasing, but the, the town is, just as you, as the council and two different versions, the previous administration and then the current makeup, that the town would cover any, if the project doesn't go forward for the, the plans and studies and et cetera, preparation that have been done, if it moves forward, the town is guaranteeing any shortfalls, but there's an agreement of how the capital charges would be. So it's, it's the base agreement, you know, to answer your question directly, yes, but there's procedure. You have to have two bodies that agree. So this agreement would be the, is the agreement to say, hey, if we continue to move forward and that loan is issued and we have financing, sanitary district, you're running with it and the town is guaranteeing that you're going, the capital charges are going to be paid. So it makes the sanitary district whole or not responsible, just as, you know, they should be because the town and its, its residents that are subject to the hookups will be paying the, the capital charge for that.
Right. But then the public hearing, if there is new information and we decide that we need to massage or alter the agreement, there is an opportunity for that at that point if both, if both bodies agree to any kind of.
Yeah, I, I think so, but I don't want to hang my hat on that or mislead anybody. The agreement is the agreement. So yes, you, you would have to have bodies, both bodies, the sanitary district and the city, agree to amend any terms to that. And, and I, I guess, for instance, who's hooking on, who's not, who's being required to, but, you know, I, I believe this version is, is certainly less inclusive in terms of who's being required, right? The capital charge is what's being covered and then the rest is, John, I guess ultimately up to what the two bodies want to do. But this agreement, again, I, I want to be clear because it's important, this agreement is the agreement.
John, any agreement can be changed if both parties agree to it, but, you know, you'd have to have both parties agree to any amendments or changes.
Right. My, my only reason for the comment is that you've got a lot of people on board here tonight that are interested in what the purpose for the public hearing is. And one of the reasons to have a public hearing is to share information and I think there may be some people that assume that their voices will be heard at the public hearing and that we may be able to make some changes. I, I guess I'm saying that would have to be agreed upon by both parties. If, if, if there's a possibility for that is, is all I'm asking. I'm not suggesting that the agreement doesn't encompass everything that we've worked so hard to come together on. I guess that was the only point I was making. Just the public, the purpose of the public hearing was to disseminate the information and then also hear from.
Right. And just, just to that question too, I mean, again, a matter, kind of matter of procedure for the Michigan city, for them to hold the public hearing on the 9th, I mean, when, when do they meet, when do they have to have this agreement by, you know?
Their meeting, I believe, is the third week of this month. So you, you have time to reconsider. I, I, I would advise that if, if you want feedback, that it's important to have feedback at this stage potentially, if that's what, if, if there's more, you know, that public hearing is going to be, and, and again, for the, so that we're, we're direct, that public hearing is going to be for the engineering plans and, you know, essentially how, how the project's going to work and how that unfolds. So, you know, can there be input? Can there be, sure, that answers your question, but, you know, again, it's, this agreement is, is the crux of the relationship between the two governing bodies.
So, so anybody that's going to be at the public hearing that wishes to voice an opinion will have already had an opportunity to see the documents, whatever the preliminary engineering report shows in the way of nuts and bolts and also the agreement, so they understand what our commitments are as a town and also the lakefront homeowners and, or not lakefront, but rather the Lake Shore Drive homeowners on hillside and, and on the, on the lakeside. We'll have an opportunity to see all that before the hearing and they can.
At least 10 days before the hearing, that, all of that will be posted and available.
Yes. But, but we as the town council tonight need to declare that we agree with, at least we have a meeting of the minds with the way the agreement is written now, so that the sanitary district has an idea that we're on board.
Yes, sir. So do we need a motion? Do you have a motion in a second already?
Okay.
And I believe the motion was to sign the agreement.
Right. And on to sanitary district.
All right. So we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let's see your hands, John. Nick?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm opposed right now.
Okay. I'm an aye. So I, I see four to one. Okay.
And I just want to explain a little bit, if I could, just for the, mainly for the council here, um, I just, I still believe that we're doing this project for the right reasons. I believe that this is not being done for 10 homes. It's, it's, that's not what, um, you know, that's not why we're proceeding with the project. I still have a desire for our town, but I know we're at a phase where we're, we're trying to get one chunk done at a time. I just, I wish, I wish we were at a point where we could somehow share some of these proposals and, and look at this as a, and to the extent that we can try to push the city, try to push Haas, try to push others to expand, you know, what we already know for Lake Shore Drive, immediately start looking at the rest of the town. I think, I think the sooner we can do that, the better. Um, you know, and I think there's some opportunity and, and I haven't looked into this yet, but, you know, if, if there are truly people who are in a financial hardship, that there's some relief for those people if they. some relief for those people, if it, if there, if that truly does exist, um, I am sensitive to that. Um, but again, I, I, you know, I, I think it's, I think it's the right move. I just, I, 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 there's still a couple of things that I, I wish we could do where we stand today, so. That's it.
I've had, uh, this coker here, I've had, uh, different comments about, you know, sharing the cost like Nick alludes to there. And the biggest, uh, comment I had is the fact that this project, well, maybe five, six, seven, eight million dollars, we don't know for sure yet, but a portion of that project is going to include replacement and re, the redoing of Lake Shore Drive. You know, while all the people on Lake Shore Drive is going to derive the benefit from the sewers, the whole town's going to benefit from Lake Shore Drive being re, rebuilt basically. And is there any way that those grant funds we have for, for the road repaving, can any of those be utilized for our Lake Shore Drive? I didn't think they could, but.
Not the current, not the current project, John. It's potential that we could apply for Lake Shore Drive in a future project, but it's very specific to what that project that was awarded for this year is going to do.
Right.
Can't include any other streets in that community grant money. That's not to say we couldn't do something else, funding wise.
Right. But that, you know, that's a comment I've had by, by some residents that, uh, you know, they see the need for the sewers, uh, but, but they don't, they would like to see the costs spread out amongst the whole town. And, uh, it might be kind of difficult for the whole town to contribute to the sewer on Lake Shore Drive. But, um, I mean, that's a concern of some people.
Any other comments? Otherwise, stop 24 bids. Um, so we opened those bids to stop 24. Uh, we had three different, uh, companies respond.
Do you want me to summarize?
Yeah, go ahead, Nick. Take it away. This is yours. Yeah.
Um, yeah, so, so this is our second, um, bid issuance. Um, for those who recall, we, we did an issuance, uh, a year ago and, and, uh, bids came back substantially higher than what, uh, what we thought the budget might be. And so we scaled, scaled the project back, we scoped it and, uh, put that to bid and these bids were far in line with, uh, with the expectation. And one of, one of the bidders came back, uh, largely higher, but suffice to say, um, you know, lowest, lowest bidder came back at, um, um, i- i- if you removed, let me put it this way, the min, the minimum cost of the project, um, if you remove some of the alternates, which gets you, you know, you know, 80% of, of what you were attempting to do there, we, we put some alternates in there just to understand what costs might look like for some of these other features. Um, but largely the, the minimum cost of the project would be 220,000. And again, uh, 220,300. And again, you know, the town, uh, is, is eligible here and, and not eligible, but approved to get a hundred thousand dollars of those funds, uh, in matching grants. So, you know, as, as dollars are being spent, reports are provided on a quarterly basis, um, to the, uh, to the statement of the federal government and then they issue you a, a check essentially as you're spending those, so you don't have to get to the full end of the 220 before you start to get reimbursement for those funds. Um, so the lowest bidder, you know, is, is, uh, Gary Up Construction, um, and, uh, they, they are ready to begin the work, uh, if, if we do provide for that project. Um, I know there are some concerns regarding, you know, current town finances and, and where we're at, um, you know, with, with our revenue sources and, and COVID and the like and, and future projects. I, I would say two things. One, you know, we had funds allocated for this project throughout, uh, throughout much of the duration. We had some hangups and, and slow ups with prior government shutdowns and, and, you know, the, the getting the bids back higher, I think also slowed this down. You know, had we, had we spent the funds and, uh, you know, completed the project when we thought we would, you know, that would be behind us and, and, you know, and the longer we sit on the project, you know, there's going to be more things that come up naturally, right? And it's going to be harder, harder and harder to do the project when you've got, you know, fire station, when you've got, you know, stop 21 and 23 and, and lake shore issues. So, I mean, there's other things creeping in the way that, that start to compete with it. Um, I will say if, if we aren't, if we don't proceed here tonight, um, there's a very slim chance to probably none that they could complete the project in time for June of next year. Um, the funds have to be spent and the project has to be, be complete by that time if we're, if we want to receive any of the funds. Um, so I, I would think if, if we're not, uh, in a position to do it, then, uh, I would say we probably have to scrap the whole project and, and kind of start from scratch and, and look at what's, uh, you know, what we might do with a lesser amount, but we wouldn't have access to those funds any longer.
Nick, was that Gary Up that was the lowest bidder?
Gary Up Construction, yes.
And what was the bid?
Uh, as I mentioned, so they, the bid came in at two, 240, here, I'll pull it up, two.
240?
Yeah.
243,700.
Yeah, 243,700. And then, so if you take out, there were some alternatives. So for the, so for the type of material for the, the board walking, the intent of the project was to use, um, this would go from, you know, where the gravel path currently is and winds around down toward the, the shoreline. Um, the material they wanted to use was something similar to what the National Park Service uses, um, very sturdy, you know, heavy duty, um, uh, material. So if you remove that, um, alternative and, and you, and you replace it with, with a, I would say, uh, a, a material that is probably used along, you know, a- along the beachfront, uh, for purposes of walking, um, you know, you bring that down and, and remove that alternate. And if you remove the second alternate, which is, which was, it was, it wasn't in the scope of the project, but where the, where the, um, turnaround drive and that overlook is located, there's, um, grass that goes off on the other side. And over the years, people have dumped, you know, bricks and building material and a whole bunch of other stuff. And so we had asked all the bidders to come back in and do two things. One, to remove all of the debris in there and then to also remove all of the, the foliage that exists there to then could be replanted with dune grass. So, um, that's, that's something we wanted to get a cost on. We figured it would be higher than what we thought, you know, closer to the 200,000 mark. Um, but we just wanted to understand what, you know, what some of these costs might look like. There's, there's other, you know, excavation companies, there's other, there's other, um, services that, that we believe, you know, either the town could do on its own or, you know, even with, with town volunteers, probably clean up some of that debris there. But, um, you know, if you remove those, if you remove those alternates, again, it gets you, it gets you to the 220,300 for the project.
So are they registered as a contractor with the town?
They, they'd have to give, they'd have to follow all of the same, you know, they'd have to get the building permits, they'd have to do all of, all of those steps and get registered as, as a contractor. Yep. That'd be a part of the process.
Uh, Nick, could, do you have a, an, an estimate from Global as to what their, I mean, we do need some management, uh, of the project, uh, that I'm assuming that they would be part of that, that would be additional expense.
Yeah, it would, there's two, there's two parts, um, that remain, you know, outside, outside of the actual construction and delivery of the project. Um, Save the Dunes, um, you know, we, when we, when we applied for the grants, one of the, one of the benefits of, or I would say, one of the reasons we were able to get the grant was to demonstrate, you know, community partnership. And so Save the Dunes was brought on board to help, uh, provide some guidance and expertise, particularly on the, on the dune restoration elements and, and kind of what goes into the plan itself. So they, they provided those, those services, but, but really they do two things. One, um, they provide, um, there, there's a lot of administration to submit and track all of the invoices that come from this contractor. And, uh, because it's a federal grant, there's, like, like I said, there's a lot more, um, the items to track and, and, and submit. So Save the Dunes would provide that service for us. But you're right, um, Global at this point, most, all of their work is complete. Um, you know, their, their, their work at this point would be to make sure that they're checking on the contractors, so they're doing, you know, e- elements of, of what they committed to and, and, uh, providing that. Um, and I don't, I don't have an estimate for, for what they've done there. I mean, I think you could probably use, uh, at least as a guidance post, you know, when, when the demolition work was occurring, they were down there pretty regularly. Um, so I would, I would expect it to be somewhere in, in line with that. I don't know, John may, may have a better thought or at least a, a range on, on what that might look like, but that's, that's the only remaining work that, uh, Global would need to provide at this point because they've all, everything they've submitted is, you know, engineered and, and drawn out and specked out to construction. So the only service that they would need to provide at this point is just those, you know, touch points until the project's complete.
Uh, Nick, Nick and Bill, this is Jeff from Golo.
Go, thank you.
So I, uh, we, we kind of put together a little rough, a rough estimate at this point. And obviously it's based on, you know, the town's needs and what the town, um, you know, the frequency of, of how often you would like us to go out there. Uh, we kind of roughly estimated it. I think it is kind of in line with what we had for the demolition. I think it was, we had $20,000 as the, uh, as kind of a, a very rough basis, but obviously it, it always depends on, you know, the frequency that we're out there and, um, you know, obviously if there's any testing or anything like that, but, you know, I wouldn't imagine there's anything like that here, but, um, so that's just, that's just very rough based on, um, you know, kind of typical projects, but obviously it can be catered to, you know, what the town needs for us to do, uh, just to, you know, to be out there and to just observe the work that's going on.
And Jeff, as far as the timeframe, um, does that decision have to be made tonight or would next month's meeting be, could we get the work done if we made that decision next month?
Um, yeah, you wouldn't have to make a, a decision on, on our contract or anything like that tonight. Um, you know, obviously that would, that would be something that can be handled in the future.
He's asking Jeff about the project, except the project.
Yeah, it's a whole project.
Oh, the whole project. Um, well, the, I guess the, the probably the, the most important piece would be the restoration por- portion. Uh, we, we would prefer to have the plantings done for the dune grass in the fall. That's the, the, the most successful, uh, time to get that done. Um, so I wouldn't say, I mean, I guess, I mean, I guess it's possible that you could, um, you make a decision at next month's meeting, but, you know, you might be, um, it might be pushing a little, a little bit too close on that, but you, you may be able to have a special meeting if you, if you prefer. Um, but it, but obviously you, you don't have to absolutely make a decision tonight, but, um.
The reason I ask is budget and finance meets on Wednesday, and so we might have a little better idea of the town's finances.
Right.
I, I might suggest two, two quick things. Um, I, I have a fair amount of expertise in the construction field and I think we could work with Jeff and reduce that commitment for expenditures on engineering. Um, I agree with Jeff's analysis. This project is nowhere near as, uh, engineering intense as that demolition project with soils renovation and that sort of thing. So we could reduce that, I believe significantly if we work together on that. And the other point is, I think you make a good suggestion, Bob. Maybe if we take a look at the budget and finance numbers and then, uh, I, I think we do need to act quickly though, because not just the plantings, but, you know, you start to enter into the fall, it's tougher to, number one, you have a commitment on documents to the contractor that you're going to award it within a timeframe. And I don't remember if that was 60 days or what it was. Jeff can help us with that, but it, it's not a good idea to wait until later in the fall to try to give somebody the go ahead on a project like this. Number one, uh, lumber material right now is at a premium because of all the COVID projects going on. And then also you, you know, they're, they get busy and, and we, I don't think it's, it's wise to push it too much farther, but I do agree that we could, in fact, I would, if there's such a thing as a motion for that, why don't we just try to have, hold a special meeting one way or the other after we look at the budget and finance numbers on Wednesday?
Budget and finance meets on Wednesday? How about if we have a special meeting at town council on Monday?
Maybe before the, before the meeting.
Don't we have APC Monday, huh?
You're an APC.
We could meet before the APC meeting. Mine, it's gonna take, not gonna take much time. How about six o'clock on Monday?
Okay.
Yeah, that works.
Which is the 17th?
Yep.
Okay. I'll get it set up and, well, Bill, you can get it announced.
Yep, that's fine.
And I'll get it on the, um, Zoom schedule. Um, okay, so I guess we don't need to take any action except to agree to have a special meeting. Do I hear a motion to have a special meeting?
I make the motion.
I hear a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good, let's have another meeting. Um, salary ordinance, I think we've kind of already talked about that with the HR.
Well, I, I, my concern is that what you're talking about, you know, I, I just, you know, John Wall would probably argue with me, but I, my view is that we're talking about changing, changing the, uh, the, uh, salary that, the, from 1.9 to 3% for those that were cut out of that is going to, is going to provide $8 a week for most of the employees. And, uh, it's not going to cost the town a lot of money. And so, uh, you know, if, if the argument is that on Wednesday at the, we are so exacting that we can figure out that we want, that $8 a week is not what we want to pay the people who were, who were skipped over and were given 1.9%, then I, I, and I think we're kind of stretching the truth here. And from my point of view, yes, there are some issues that may require significant, uh, work on, uh, on, uh, this Wednesday, but, uh, to me, the, the difference between 1.9 and 3 is, uh, I mean, I, that to me is more of a council decision than it is an HR decision. And, uh, you know, but, but that's your call, so, uh, and my, my feeling on it still should be that everyone should be equal and, uh, we should, everybody should be earning the same because, but basically what, what people are, are feeling is that even the money is not going to mean much difference. I can't, I'm sitting next to, at least on my Zoom meeting, to Bob Sokowski, and if he really can see the difference between 1.9 and 3% and his next paycheck, I'll, you know, I'll buy him dinner.
Oh, good. I'm going.
But, you know, it's.
I hear that.
But it means something, it means something to, to the employees because it's, uh, specific. Uh, it, it's, it's, it's nettles them all, so. Mr. President? May I speak on this? I brought this up at the police commission meeting. Two months ago at the council meeting, the vote was two to two in order to give us the remaining to get us up to the 3%.
Right.
Cause Nick was absent at the meeting. The commission thought that it already had been approved and I told them all that it wasn't. So, uh, that's why I wanted to be put back on the agenda for tonight.
So what's, what's the motion now? I, do we?
The motion is to make those employees who did not get 3% to make them whole. And so I think that amounts to probably nine people out of 11, right, Bill?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Now, further down on the agenda, but it's also come to my attention that, uh, Meg Collins has worked here for five years for the town, uh, and she's never participated in any of the pay raises, uh, apparently because we don't give part-time people pay raises. Uh, I can tell you that Meg has become more integral in the running of this town over time, particularly since we've had to go to Zoom meetings and all the postings and all the special meetings. Um, so I'd really like to recommend that she get the pay raises that she has been denied.
No, the HR committee is going to look at that on Wednesday and no one could think more of Meg Collins than me, except maybe her dad. And so we want to keep that as a separate thing because we have some other inequities that Mike Conisek and the HR committee are helping us look at. So we want to just consider the pay raise that was considered in the December of 2019 meeting. And we promise you on, that we will get these fixed on August 12th because I've got a spreadsheet. I've shown, I will show everybody where we're at, um, and we will take care of it, but we want to take care of the current full-time employees right now.
Bill, can you guarantee that's going to be back on the agenda next month?
Oh, yeah, yeah. And I, I'm, I'm in big favor of, of, uh, as I said, in, uh, in reviewing that, uh, and, uh, recommending of an increase. So it just, but this is, this is one that doesn't have anything to do with inequities. It has to do with, I mean, it. It has to do with, I mean, it isn't equity, but it's a different, it's a different flavor. It's, you know, I mean, people telling me how many more miles they drive than somebody else, you know, and it's, it didn't solve whatever we were trying to solve back in December.
All right, we have a motion and a second, I believe, right?
I made the motion. I promise you, you'll have a decision by, by the end of the month. We will make a recommendation.
And do we have a second?
I second it.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody opposed, so unanimous. Okay. We've got executive order update, COVID-19 restrictions and masks. I think that relates to the fact that people need to be wearing masks when they're in the town center, when they're at the community center. My feeling is, is with the data that we're seeing in Indiana, I don't think we should be changing that. This is certainly not the time to loosen those restrictions, in my view. Anybody, I think we.
I think, I agree with you, Bob. I mean, Indiana hasn't flattened the curve, as they said yet, and I think we still got to be really careful, and we try to keep everybody as healthy as we can. I don't think we've got a big problem in Long Beach yet. Let's hope it stays that way.
So I guess I would make a motion to leave the restrictions as they are. I do believe most places have said playground equipment can be freed up. I think ours already probably is, but I guess I'd include that in there, saying playground equipment can be, can be used at this point. So two parts to the motion. Do I hear a second?
I second it.
All in favor, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right.
I think that was unanimous. Opening community center in Town Hall, I think that's probably included in that same motion. I think where the Town Hall is, or where the community center is, it should stay the same. I'll make that as a motion, no change in the community center.
The Y can still be there, right?
Just like they're doing, yeah.
Okay, all right.
So I make that motion to leave it as it is. Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Any discussion?
The Town Hall and the community center, right?
That's, yeah, I don't think I included the community center in my original motion.
Okay.
So this is the community center, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. The three ordinance, I don't think we're ready for yet. Next month, for sure. More road traffic, we've already dealt with.
Okay.
Trash at the Lake Shore Drive stops, I think we've already dealt with that. Reeve Riley paving project, I think we've already dealt with. Golf cart ordinance, we've already dealt with under new business. Long Beach police hiring process. The plan was to start interviews, hopefully in August, but I think the HR is working on that job description for the police chief.
Yep.
The feeling is, is we ought to have a job description before we start the interview process.
Yeah, I shared that update earlier. It might have been unmeeded at that point, but yes, yeah, we're going to move to an interview process with the Police Commission and make a decision to get, with recommendations at the Town Council. Our hope, our hope is that we can have it for the September meeting, but if not, we'll keep the council informed here.
Okay. Okay, we can skip over the next item?
Bob, what about our resolution?
Yep, that's where I'm at now.
Okay, good.
So I'm going to give the floor to you for the resolution regarding women's suffrage.
Okay, so I'm very thankful that we have a town resident, Reema Binder, and she got in touch with me. And this is a resolution of the town of, the resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Long Beach, Indiana, commemorating the centennial of the ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment and honoring Women's Equality Day. Whereas the women of the United States have historically been treated as second-class citizens and have often been deal, have been denied the full rights and privileges, public or private, legal or institutional, which are available to male citizens of the United States. And whereas for 72 years, hundreds of thousands of women in the United States supported and many dedicated their very lives to the crusade for the right to vote. And whereas in the state of Indiana, thousands of women fought for the franchise, but their accomplishments and stories remained to be discovered and told. And whereas two Loport County suffragists have recently been rediscovered and are being honored by the League of Women Voters of Loport County, namely Naomi Bowman Talbert Anderson and Ziola Hershey Meisner. And whereas the Nineteenth Amendment to the Constitution was ratified on August 18, 1920, and was certified as part of the United States Constitution on August 26, 1920, thereby giving women their political freedom. And whereas in the months following the ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment, millions of women registered to vote, thereby assuming the responsibilities of citizenship and exercised their right to vote by voting in the presidential election in November of 1920. And whereas for the past 100 years, through the actions and with the support of the League of Women Voters, women have made significant contributions to government and the real-life issues affected by government and are to be commended and supported in their organizations and activities. And whereas on August 26, 2020, the League of Women, or the Women of the United States are celebrating Women's Equality Day and are commemorating the centennial of the ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Long Beach, Indiana commemorates the centennial of the ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment and honors Women's Equality Day. Thank you.
Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right.
All right, now we're to public comments. So if people have public comments, if you go to the reaction section and raise your hand, I will call on you, and you'll be able to make a public comment. So feel free.
Can you hear me? This is Reema Binder.
Uh, Reema, I don't see where you raised your hand, but go right ahead. Give your, give your address.
I don't know where to raise my hand.
Okay, go ahead.
Not technologically into with you people, but thank you very much for Mary Lou and the resolution, really, and thank you, because Mary Lou would not be sitting on the Town Council had we not had what happened 100 years ago. So I appreciate her presenting the resolution. Beyond that, I do have a comment regarding the town and, of course, the entire.
Toter.
Toter issue. I guess the town, and I'm not opposed to that, teaching people civility and good behavior. But I don't believe that we can, as a general public, teach each individual what the best way to behave are. We, in the last, I would say, month or since Memorial Day, my daughter and I have observed behaviors I have not observed here in 15 years as a resident. People driving, letting their children, who are seven, eight years old, drive carts at 6:30 and 7 o'clock at night, that's an issue. People driving their cars at a speed that is well beyond, I was at fault at that once. And the toter thing, though, when we moved here, the town provided, and we paid for, garbage pickup twice a week, and there was not a problem, of course, at that time. The stops were open, and we had a beach. Currently, we have a problem, and that's nature-based. We do not have the beach we had 15 years ago, or 20 years ago, or 30 years ago. But we still have people coming. I've noticed people, and I've taken photographs of license plates and cars that, one, not only are day Illinois, but obviously, there are cars that we generally would not see along the lake shore. They are parked on properties that do not belong to them, it's private property. I observed that over this past weekend. And I believe by taking the toters away, we're going to cause even a bigger problem that we currently have. We pay, and I look at the exorbitant bill from the water department and pick up garbage. I would be willing, and I think many other people too, as residents, would be willing to pay the charge to have our beach toters picked up twice a week. They do not have to go through the entire Long Beach town. All they have to do is go along Lake Shore Drive and make sure those are picked up. Now, I don't know whether we're going to be teaching anybody a lesson. I don't think that's our role. We can make it work, we can problem solve. And I believe if you've read, and I believe most of you have, our neighborhood, the number of comments and the displeasure of so many people who live here year-round to have a decision made without any input from the community at large. And I believe that's a right of every citizen who lives in Long Beach to have a word to the Town Council to consider and reconsider some decisions that often appear unilateral. That's my comment. I don't agree with it. I believe we should have pickup more often along the lakefront, and that is due to the fact that we have stops that have been closed due to lack of access. Therefore, we have people, let's say at 28, who have been never seen before in 28 years, but they're coming from other stops, and I've watched them from where they're coming to come to 28. Obviously, our toters are going to be filled and overfilled due to the fact that we have multiple more people coming than we had in 15 years. And that's due to the rise of.
How long people comment to three minutes, because otherwise we're never.
Thank you, I apologize for speaking.
No problem.
Thank you.
I didn't, I didn't warn you in advance.
Reema, thank you.
Anybody else with public comments?
Reema, thank you for your comments, and our Park Board is looking into this, and I think if they come up with a solution that we can all live with, we'll look at that.
Absolutely, thank you.
I'm not seeing anybody else who raised their hand, so I'm going to go through it one more time, if there's a hand raised.
There's somebody, Joe somebody.
And Anita Remages raised her hand as well.
All right, let's go with Joe first, since I heard about Joe. Joe, where's Joe?
Um, he's next to Bill.
Maybe on your screen, not on mine.
I'll mute myself if you can hear me.
I got three participants who've raised their hands now.
That's true.
Anita, I found you, you go ahead and talk.
Hi. Okay, go ahead, Anita Remages, 2301 Floramonde Avenue. I have three comments. One is, I am a member of the Park Board. The Park Board has been charged with implementing the council's rules. So Reema mentioned the Park Board can change their mind. The Park Board is not changing their mind, the Park Board is implementing what the Town Council asked us to do. Two, I have two comments, two more. One is about 30-day rentals. Mary Lou mentioned that someone let her know about a rental that was less than 30 days. Unfortunately, it wasn't until, Bob, you prompted her about calling the police, that she mentioned she did call the police. I think it's important that anybody listening in and any residents know that if they know of somebody that is violating the 30-day rule, reach out to the police, and if they'd like, they can also advise the Town Council. Three, Bob, several months ago, you mentioned putting up more deer signs, and it was voted down by the council. I'm glad to hear that it has come up again and that it's being acted on, and just hope that people slow down a little bit. That's it.
Great, thanks, Anita. All right, Tim? You have to unmute yourself, though. Tim, you're still muted. Okay, I'm going to go to the next one, and we'll get back to Tim.
Joe?
Tim, is that you?
Yeah, I don't know what happened there.
Okay, go ahead, identify yourself and give us your address.
This is Tim Hanley on Chassleton, neighbor of the McCuskers, a few things. The McCuskers were the family that asked for the zoning variance for a shed. They went through all the proper procedures, spent over $2,000 hiring their lawyer to make sure they followed the proper procedures, sent out the registered letters, every neighbor approved. What they wanted to do was okay with the neighbors, only for the council to vote that down. And I was very disappointed in that situation. I feel that we wasted their money and wasted their time if the decision to vote it down was not talked about upfront before they did what they had to do. Just wanted to express my disappointment. Secondly.
The council didn't vote them down. That's, that's not our job, that's the.
Or the, I'm sorry, the zoning.
Right.
Whoever did it. Secondly, I have called, and my neighbors have called, when they repaved Chassleton, I'm at 2211 Chassleton, after a big storm like tonight, we have gathering water. When the street was repaved, the sloping, all the water comes to our side of the street and gathers until, you know, the weather cooperates and it goes away. My neighbor and I have called last summer and this summer, no one has replied back to us.
You know what, Tim, that's, that's a Tom Dahl or a John Wall, and they're very responsive if somebody asks.
Well, last, like I said, last summer, this summer, Ann and I have called a few times each summer, only to not be replied back to. And finally, to the resident who talked about the garbage containers at the beach stops, I agree 110%. The holiday weekend, it's up 20 because of the lack of the beach stops, more people going to other beaches. Totes were overflowing on Saturday. I think our township can find a way to have special pickups at all the beach stops on the holiday weekends or the summer weekends.
Tim, this is John Wall. If you get an email in to me through the town website, we'll take a look at that situation on the drainage. This is what. Yeah, again, I'm new since January, I don't know what you did in Perry.
John, I've got his address for you. I'll text it to you.
I don't need the address, I need some way to get ahold of him.
Oh, okay.
So Tim, if you get on, Tim, if you get on the, Tim, if you get on the town website, just look for the connection, it gets, shoot me an email, we'll make an appointment and talk about it.
Thank you.
Okay, Tom King.
This is Tom King, 2301 Floramonde. First of all, thank you for, to Reema Binder, I agree with everything you said, Reema, from the women's voting all the way through the toters issue. But that said, I want to make a couple of quick points. One, Chris Willby, yes or no, I'm confused by your response on the air quotes agreement. Is this agreement binding the Town of Long Beach to something with the Michigan Sanitary District? If so, what specifically? And within those specifics, is there a dollar mark? I just heard somebody on the Town Council quote, oh, five, six, sevens or so million. Well, that's a pretty broad range, and the private sector, that wouldn't float. So are we binding ourselves to anything economically, specifically? And if so, what? Everyone just said they've read this agreement nine times. Is there a dollar value in it? Is there, that's vital information for the entire town, and it directly impacts the people who are going to be paying it. So I think that's necessary information. So this, this resolution that was just passed, does it bind us to anything? Most importantly, economically with the city of Michigan City. Thank you.
Chris, did you have, John Wall, it looked like you wanted to say something?
I was going to say, I generally don't respond, my, my job is to respond to the council, so if you give me direction, but.
Yep, John, you had.
The only comment I would make, Tom, is we don't go to the Town Council. We need these answers, they're very relevant. Tom, give me a chance to answer, will you? So right now, what we're doing with this agreement is we're putting forth a framework between the two entities so that we can understand each other with what we're proceeding down the road with in terms of the sewer project. I'm not going to get into all the level of detail, because you're going to have to get on the website and pick up the agreement and take a look at it like the rest of the Town Council has had to do. But what I will tell you is, the reason that we can't identify a tight number is, the preliminary engineering report, which you're going to have access to before the public hearing, will outline what the project consists of. There will be some final engineering, and then there'll be quotes in from contractors. At that point, you'll have a specific number with a specific pro-rata, per-household charge that you'll be able to understand. We don't know that number right now, that's why there is a little bit of fluidity in terms of the precise cost.
John, with respect to tight number, again, air quotes, five, six, seven million, can we get tighter than that? we get tighter than that?
Not right now, Tom, not till...
Okay, then let's go back to the original question, John, to what are we binding ourselves economically?
You're going to have to look at the agreement, Tom, we don't have enough time tonight to get into it. Why don't you do this for me?
Okay, then yes or no, does it bind us economically to the Michigan City Sanitary District? Just simple yes or no.
That's the new answer, I'm not going to get into that with you, Tom. You need to read the agreement, and then we can have an intelligent discussion.
I think that's a really poor answer. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Anybody else want to raise their hand or comment, who hasn't been able to figure out how to raise their hand? If you do, unmute yourself and talk.
Hello, this is Joe Sherman.
Go ahead, Sherman.
I'm with Charlotte Hills Property Owners Association at Stop 31, and going back to the agreement with the sanitary district, in a lot, and I've attended many of the meetings, and in past meetings, they have said that because our property in Long Beach is not developed for, and it's just used for beach access, would not be included in the assessments for the sewer system, and I'm just concerned about that, and I was just wondering if you can give me some kind of direction now.
Yeah, I believe that's true, that's a town beach stop, right?
Correct.
Yeah, we won't be putting plugs in at the beach stops.
Bob, the only thing I might disagree with you, he's charged, like, they're resident because they have a water tap there.
But he won't be charged for the sewers. We've discussed this before, Joe, these meetings, there's not going to be any stubs going to your, going to the beach, beach stop. You might get charged for water, but that's not...
Okay, so the water's different, the water department, okay.
Thank you.
So, Joe, you can rest tonight.
Yes.
Go ahead, Sam. Identify yourself, though.
I am... I have a...
Can anybody understand, Sam?
I understand.
Sam, something's wrong with your audio.
I'm very concerned about the removal...
Can't hear you, Sam.
I can...
Turn your volume, try turning your volume down, or let's see what happens.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, well, sure, sure. Is that better? Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Again, I'm Sam Duthoy, I live at 2305 Oakinwald, I'm an Indiana resident. I too am very, very concerned about the removal of voters and the very expensive, brand-new car that was placed on the beach. Yes, it's been an unusual year with extra people...
Sam, we can't hear you, something's happening. Do you have maybe a cell phone in your, nearby?
But I think that knee-jerk reaction to remove all of those totters is wrong, and I'm very concerned about the people who live on Lakeshore Drive, because without any garbage cans... Is that better? Is that better?
Yep.
Let's give it, I don't know what to say. Hello?
Yep, we hear you now.
Okay. Is that any better?
Yeah, you're doing better. Keep talking.
Sorry. No, no totters, keep the totters. So, sorry. Hello?
No problem.
Sorry.
Anything else you want to say, Sam? We're actually hearing you now.
Okay. Sorry, it's not working. Okay, keep the totters.
Okay.
It's a foolish decision, I'm sorry. Please keep the totters.
All right, I don't see any other public comments.
I have a comment.
Great, I apologize for that. I'm very concerned...
Identify yourself.
...of totters being removed as an environmental disaster. People are going to walk onto Lakeshore Drive, private property, and put their trash in people's bins. It's going to be the wrong move. At the very least, may we please test it?
All right, somebody else had a comment?
I have a comment, if you can hear me, my name is Laura Henkel. Can you hear me?
Yep, where do you live, Laura?
I'm at 2310 Oakinwald, so I'm a neighbor of Sam's. I, and, you know, a few people tonight, including Reema and Sam evidently too, have voiced dis, you know, discontent with the idea of removing the totters, and I, I am in their camp with that. My concern is that, yes, there, we can put some other cans there during the high-water times and the crowded beach. I sent letters to each of the council members today outlining this in particular, but in addition to maybe doubling up on some of the cans on the very high-use beach stops such as 20 and 26 and 28, and taking them from the stops such as 22, 23, that don't have access to the beach right now, that could alleviate short-term. In addition, I do feel that people are really, they usually clean up very well on the beaches if it's very full, two times the week, Thursday and a Monday, or Friday and a Monday, pickup would definitely alleviate that. In addition, I do think that people carrying their garbage back is, is going to be a disaster. I think that garbage tends to float out, it drips down, it will make, I know there was concern about animals at the stops, meaning varmints, not pets. I just think it'll just spread the problem around from the stop to the different neighborhoods. So I would definitely ask you to please reconsider removing the totters and keeping them there. Thank you.
Anybody else want to talk? I'll take that as a no. Any council comments? Claims approval bill.
We lost Bill, so he asked me to read them.
Okay.
Okay, claims, check number 17360 through 17415 totaling $119,244.72, and salaries for July, $59,639.95.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move we approve, Coker?
Do I hear a second?
I second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
That's the water, but we'll use it.
Oh, come on, a second, guys. I'll second it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, I got a third, all right. Good night, everybody.
Good night.